Call us mean to orders, please stand for pledge of flag.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Roll call. Mr. Yocum.
Present.
Mr. Crawley.
Present.
Myself are here. Approval of the minutes of last month's meetings?
Make a motion to be accepted.
A second. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same thing. Uh, the claims and the payroll.
Make a motion to be accepted.
A second. All papers say aye.
Aye.
We're gonna jump down to new business here real quick like, uh, the Hilldale property. The bonds, yes?
Okay, uh, it's a point of property that we have maintained for sixty years that the, uh, state, we have came to them and the state purely seized control of it sometime back in the seventies and we're trying to get it, trying to do it within their sales property.
I wouldn't look to that, I know where they're talking, I always thought it was their property all these years, I didn't know it was state owned.
I know, I've owned it for fifty years.
We'd have no interest in not that much.
You wouldn't look that?
Huh?
You wouldn't look that?
I wouldn't look that, yeah.
As far as your dad's property comes to a point?
I have a recent.
Let me see that real quick.
When you go to Hill, turn off thirty-six and oh sixty-three, Hilldale that first right there. Yeah.
Yeah, something over here.
I don't really have a letter from the state.
What we gotta do?
Motion to allow, I'll turn it over to them.
Make a motion.
Before they do, how we should do it, John?
They should record a deed as part of the sale process, otherwise the new owner will have the same problem because it will remain, uh, off the tax rolls, so they should, they should take care of that as part of the sale process, but they can take the minutes of this meeting as a record that we approved that.
Motion to allow?
Make a motion to allow.
State property, sort of, where then they need to record a deed, is that correct?
They should record the legal description of that property when they sell it, uh, along with their current parcel.
Yeah, that being from Joel West, that he leaves it.
Uh huh, okay.
That just means, well, that's been recorded, but something else needs to be.
Just make sure when you sell it that it's recorded that all that is sold to the new owner.
Get a copy of the minutes when we input with that.
Aye.
All right. Everybody agree with?
Make a motion, allow.
A second.
All papers say aye?
Aye.
Joint, roll cut for a minute?
They ain't here.
Okay. Okay, we got a bridge over Spring Creek, we'll go back to that. Uh, vacate an alley, Mrs. Rockman writes?
Yes.
Okay.
A request to vacate an alley that goes through our garage, we own the property about twenty years, um, and we own both sides of the alleyway.
Where's that at?
Just in, a favor needs by number of parts, out help, help.
Harry, you know where it's at, Harry?
Yeah.
You fill the paperwork out, everything was?
Mm-hmm. Evocation and everything, we're all of that.
Anybody here oppose it, oppose it?
Motion to allow?
I'll make a motion to allow.
Second. All papers say aye?
Aye.
You get your paper taken care of. Okay. All right, now we can go back to the regular business, then we'll come back to new business again here. Code nineteen F eight, Wendy?
Any of the stuff available to put on the screen today?
No.
Is that gonna be available in the future?
Uh, that was an option, guys opted out of if you want that option, um, if someone comes through with a presentation, they can look up, um, but we don't have a way to do their presentation.
Can you find out how much it costs? I think the people will go see what we do here up on there. Go ahead, Wendy.
Okay. Um, so I've, I've made up from the day that we first got our COVID testing, positive testing all through up to the thirtieth, kinda to show you guys how the cases are coming in to the county. Um, this is when I have it reported to me, so it, it would be different than what the state website says, so that's.
Sure.
So that, from March twenty-seventh was our first reported case.
Good, thank you though.
So right now, we have ninety-five.
We had ninety-five cases, we're starting out active.
Not, not active.
Do you know how many's active?
I do not.
Who would know that?
We have, uh, four people that are doing contact tracing, so each one has so many, um, cases at this point. So as you can see, we've, the last few weeks have grown, um, been on the phone a lot with Dr. Albright, he's been advising us on this, and we've been on the phone with the schools, um, daily, as long with the, along with their nurses, so we touch base with them almost daily on situations going on in the schools. And they are doing a fabulous job.
So the schools are all okay right now? They got some out?
They're just working through, each day is a new day for them, so different things come their way. The, the unfortunate thing is there are, so there's sinuses that have the same symptoms as COVID, so, I mean strep throat's going around, there's several different things going around, so that, you know, they have to take each, each one individually and just evaluate that student or staff member, so, but the, the nurses, the superintendents and the principals, administration, they're doing a great job, as well as the teachers, because they are right there with the students, so they have to be aware of what's going on with each, each, each room, each student. Also, the testing site, um, we do have all of our equipment, unfortunately, the equipment is not, um, working together, so the state is working for that, they wanted everything up by today, but unfortunately, um, if your equipment doesn't work, we're not going to do it. I told them we won't do it until we know everything is ready to go and works how it's supposed to. So they are coming in, um, training, um, we are looking at hiring and we've hired, we will be hiring some, we have a couple RNs that are gonna take the lead on this, and then we're gonna hi, we can hire EMTs, paramedics, which that was all advertised out there, um, nurses, and even people, if, if they wanna work part-time, we need people to do registration. So this is a ten-month grant that the state has given us at a hundred thousand dollars. They supply everything except the, um, employees and the workers are in the building, so we're gonna do it, start out as a drive-through, we've talked to the, um, mayor, so we will have after-hour clinics, so any one of our main county or surrounding counties can come in and be tested, um, we do ask, we would like them, we do take Watkins, but we really, really want them to do online, that way we know how staffing, how much staffing we need during that testing period. We'll have two nights a week up until seven o'clock, and then Saturday, ten to five, uh, three Saturdays a month, so hopefully we can, you know, work with people's schedules, and if someone can't get in that period of time, then we'll try to work with them to get them in, to have them tested, if they choose to.
Are they gonna close that lockdown, make it one way or another?
On Sa, on, um, Saturdays only right now. We will eventually move it into the building, what we'll have to due to weather in the wintertime, so that's how we are gonna start out, is a drive-through.
Any of the public have any questions for, she's, she's here.
So how long will it be as opposed to when you get tested and get results, do you have a handle on that?
They're saying three to five days, but they, they come back, that's what they're telling us, the timeframe, so they'll be picking, the state will be picking up the test every day at a certain time.
Is it a swap test, or is it?
It's swap.
Any questions? Thank you, Wendy.
Okay.
IT update?
Nate, it'd be AS. As far as the IT updates concerned, we're, we've got one computer left in the courthouse to deploy, we've got the, uh, remote sites computers to deploy, um, the server infrastructure is ninety-eight respectively, um, we started, started to, um, roll out the domain controllers at the remote sites, so it's moving along pretty good this time, it's, uh, definitely been, been a road, so we're, we're getting there.
What, what you know on the phone system, they get it corrected and?
Um, yeah, they did get it corrected last, uh, what day was that, Wednesday, that, um, they did get it corrected, AT&T had to, um, go replace repeaters and lines up in the area. To get that fixed.
You might wanna tell us why, we discussed this morning about a changeover on the phones and when it'll be done, and what's your projected time?
Uh, the project that we, I spoke to Level Three Sixty-Five and for the courthouse, the week of the fourteenth through the eighteenth, we're gonna do a soft deploy of phones, um, that is, put the phones on people's desks, they'll be able to make calls between desks, they will not have an external number at that time, um, on the twenty-third of September, they will go live, um, AT&T will drop, Level Three Sixty-Five will pick up, I do have a Level Three Sixty-Five rep here with me today, and she's gonna speak for the remote sites, and if you have any questions for her, she'd be happy to answer them too.
So will the courthouse be out of phones any time?
They should not, no. Nope. Unless, unless the cut over, unless something with the phone ports goes awry, it should be spot on, you guys have had success with AT&T before?
Yeah, we would know prior to, um, the actual day of the cut over if there was gonna be an issue with the port, so, um, and then at that point, we would work with AT&T and figure out why they're not releasing your phone numbers, um, but we'll know, I, the court's already been approved, so there shouldn't be any issues.
Is there a possibility that each office could be issued a cellphone, that when something like this happens, they got, that we can have a cellphone, it could be advertising a call in?
So, one of the reasons we decided to go with Level Six, Three Sixty-Five, in their, in their offering, um, there's an app that goes on your cellphone, and it acts just like a desk phone, um, you can make calls with the courthouse number from that app, you can receive calls to that app, just like you're sitting at your desk, if the, so the phones or internet go out, your cellphone's gonna ring if you have cell service.
So we could, should we look at maybe buy personally a cellphone for each office, have that app in, so it's not just?
If, if you wanted to do that, absolutely.
Because the officer would have to be gone, they got that in their phone?
Yep. That would be, that, that would be a good disaster recovery or, uh, just preparedness.
Another thing that we was talking about, did you recommend later to have a separate line for the phone circuit?
Yeah, um, so I talked to Jenny, and she, in their proposal, we put an AT&T backup line, um, just for data, so it would be a small, it would be a small internet line just to have redundancy, um, the nice part about that is, we could use it, when, when the internet is not down, we could, we could utilize that to copy, um, to the disaster recovery site during the day without affecting the main internet connection.
That's my main question is, if something happens on the data line, you've got the phone and data on there, you'll have a backup, so it'll be working?
Right, right, and the other part of the, so with your spark light new wave connection, you do have a four-hour agreement, so if, if you go down, they have to be here fixing it within four hours, or they're paying the courthouse for downtime. So that is, that is written into that contract, I believe. And they're super responsive, but every time I've called them, it had resolution pretty quick.
They have a local office, or they?
Uh, they, they have a local office in Clinton, um, but the service for the courthouse comes out of Westfield, Illinois, so you're kind of at, you're, they have to come across state lines to fix it, which is no big deal, um, last spring, when new wave went down, we had a guy, um, think the courthouse was out, was out for six hours total, but it was a line break, so, um, that's to be expected by the time you splice it, find it, everything, so.
You all, so we got any questions, right, my chair? Judge?
I have a question, but just to clarify for the record, in case anyone's listening on the YouTube channel, we were still dropping calls Thursday and Friday, so in case someone's out there saying, well, I called Friday and it was not, it was still not working for us Thursday and Friday.
Was it, was it as bad as it was prior, or was it just spotty? It was just spotty, okay, so?
Instead, a lot of static.
A lot of static, okay.
So, just to clarify, not disagreeing with you, Nate.
Sure.
Just to make sure people are listening, but they might be more hanging up on Thursday and Friday.
Thank you, Judge. Verinda?
Nate, will you be here all day?
Yes, I will. Okay.
Thank you, Nate, all right.
How the phone, do you have an, an addendum?
Yes.
Talk about that?
Yeah, this is Jenny Holden, she's with Level Three Sixty-Five, and I'll ever speak to the addendum.
So on the RFP that everyone, whoever participated it, it was based on a specific user account that didn't include the satellite offices, so, and I think when I talk to you, it sounds like there's a couple offices that are not.
Right.
Moving over, so.
Right, because they're, they're in a lengthy contract with, I think, joint.
So, yeah, so they need to be added, um, if they wanna be on our system, um, one thing about our solution is that it's very scalable, so you can add and delete users as often as necessary, so you're only going to pay for your active users, so if this month we bring two of the satellite offices on, and then we can bring the other ones later, we can do that, if they need to delete users, you can do that, you're only gonna pay for your active users.
Mark, have they contacted you on?
I, I have a very sweet deal with my office right now, and I would hate to mess it up with somebody else coming in.
Right.
I pay a hundred and fifty dollars a month, where I used to pay six hundred and fifty dollars a month, I have excellent service, no issues, and really don't wanna mess with it.
And that was one of the satellites that we, we said?
Okay.
That gives me a backup internet.
Okay. That's fine then.
Oh, yeah, totally, absolutely, so I just need to get a final count from you, and then I'll make changes to that addendum, yeah, and send it, I don't know who to send it to.
The ones that, the ones that are important are the health department, they have the exact same phone system as the courthouse, it's, it's really hard to work with, um, you have to call a fourth-party vendor every time you make a change, um, and then soil and water, and I think the highway department would benefit from it as well.
All right, the highway department, right?
Highway department's all on there, or?
Is it, okay, so then, just the, just the, the, uh, health department and soil and water would be?
Sound like, yeah, they have the, they have the same.
See, I'm not sure on that, because we don't.
Purdue's got their own system.
Purdue's got their own system?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
ICS, but that isn't even out there.
So, I'll give that forward to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bringing your eyes? Right here. General innovation. The council, like we discussed this last meeting, wants you to A, Plan A, which is what the original thing was, or Plan B, what we decided to reduce down to, look at, I recommend. We set, whatever they fund is what we're gonna go with, what they're willing to fund.
Correct me to what?
Whatever they wanna fund, I'm willing to go with, I mean, either the basic or the full-blown, what we talked about earlier.
Well, the whole thing about all this is.
We need to get it done.
We need to do something, but the problem is, we don't know where we're gonna go with this crowding situation, uh, where are we at now on the crowded?
Today's fifty-three.
How many?
We're not crowded right now.
No, but how many you got?
Fifty-three, but I'm still going.
What, about seventy-two is your limit?
That's the legal beds is seventy-two.
So, my only situation that I worry about is if there's changes in the catch and release or whatever, the change of letting people out and keeping people in is gonna affect the jail population, we're back to the same problem we had, which we started with, and, uh, I, I think we ought to figure out some way to add some beds or something in that quote, that we're protected, because if we spend this amount of money and not have it enough room, that little bit of bumper there, I think it's gonna come back and bite us, that's my personal opinion. And that could happen, right, Sheriff?
Yeah, we don't know what's gonna happen in the future, we're in a program.
And, uh, judges, you got, judge or prosecutor, got anything to say about that?
About what, Kevin?
About our jail population, what do you think?
You mean like predict what it's gonna be?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're looking at doing something with the jail, and if, if we spend this money and all of a sudden we still ain't got no place to put people, we're back to the same problem, so we're trying to figure out, do we need to go ahead and include more bedding, you know, for, for more, I mean, it's, we're gonna have to do it sooner or later, unless there's something comes down where they're not gonna hold them, but right now it's going right back up, so I think that we ought to do something about, at least an option, you know, for twenty beds or thirty beds, something we might not have to go to full scale, which originally we had, but something needs to be in there about the housing, and I'm, it's up to, you guys think that, uh, what do you think, Mike?
I've been chewed on because I track up a number of beds, so, uh, I don't disagree with you, but it needs to be affordable, but we could, we need to move forward on what we're gonna do or whatever, but I've got beat up in some of my other clubs that I'm a part of, because I, I made that statement that I made, I don't know what the future holds, I have no clue.
What was the?
But I also don't disagree that, in the future, it could be a problem, we're spending ten, fourteen million dollars not adding beds, that's a problematic.
What was the ask for originally a bed increase, Mike? What was, in the original plan, what was you adding, asking for originally a bed increase?
Oh, man, we'd have gone from, uh, what, seventy-two to about a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty-five.
Could we go to thirty?
We would have moved everybody except for holding cells out of the current facility and medical space, medical space is still, we're negative air flow is still problematic without rubbers and everything.
Would we go thirty, or we go half that, or?
We would have to ask the, the, uh, RQAW, I mean, they're the ones that designed that, we talked about, they were here this past week, and, uh, they had a couple ideas on how to do it, we had a few ideas, and hopefully they'll keep those in mind.
Anyway, we have.
Yeah, just adding twenty or thirty. Again, that's the overpowering thing that made it worse, was the level six part, if we didn't have that, we probably would have looked at it in the first place, and that's not gonna go to work.
Could we have another jail committee meeting to look at this? Would that be okay?
Yeah. I just.
Do whatever we're gonna do, let's, let's move on a day or a night.
We need to move forward, what you calling? Input, input, or?
No, I don't have anything to add, that's all.
We need to, we need to move forward, we went on six years, we're not done nothing, we need to move forward.
Modeling or whatever they told, whatever you guys paid them to do, I mean, you need to get that result from, from them before you.
Okay.
We've seen kind of the rendering of it in the past.
I thought he was gonna, he called yesterday, I thought he was gonna be here this morning, but apparently he's not, so.
I think we're gonna have another jail committee meeting, and at least address that, and see if the funding's available to, at least provide twenty, thirty beds, 'cause I, if we're making this big an investment, and turn around and you're back to the same problem you had at the beginning.
One, ten years in a row, where you cut it out then, it costs less money, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. We've been waiting six years to do this, so.
What are you gonna do? You with the original one? I wouldn't look to, the council wants to do different things on funding.
Well, we happen to meet him.
Yeah, we need to have another meeting.
The rendering that you guys have paid for, because they're not done with that yet. I mean, you need to at least see that.
Set it up, Mike. Set it pretty quick, Ken?
Next week.
What's your schedule, Tim?
I'll think about it. Get with me, we'll figure out something on a date, Tom.
That's all, all right. Handbook.
You'll be working, you won't be here for the next meeting, right?
Yeah, I'll be here next meeting.
He will.
When they changed the times of the meetings, when I started missing meetings, really, that's the reason why I miss sometimes.
So you will be at the next?
Yes, I'm taking time off for those.
The next meeting will be the minimal business meeting.
Yeah.
So if you want to talk about jail, you're probably need to schedule a special meeting, if not, we need to get the twenty-nine out of six P M.
I think we'll have a special meeting.
A special meeting just for that jail?
The advertised.
Advertised.
Just for the jail, special meeting.
I got forty-eight hour notice, paper twice a week, so you just have to give me a notice of what day and what time.
Soon as we get down to jail meeting, they'll notify you.
Okay.
Okay, on the handbook, you had it, you had anything?
On the handbook, I have the extra sections that needed to be completed, and that was, uh, sorry, um, that was IT section and, um, the FMLA, which, all we're doing on FMLA is pretty much taking out all the extra wording, because it's twenty-six pages long, so we're just putting it down into one paragraph, and then letting everyone know if they need to get more information, that they come and see me. Um, the paper that I just passed out to you was regarding the longevity pay, we've had several questions, so this needs to be clarified by the commissioners on what we're going to allow and not allow on the longevity pay. So if we could work through those pretty quickly?
Go ahead.
Um, so laid off, if an employee is laid off due to a lack of work and then rehired, are they going to be able to keep their years of service, or do they start over?
So rehired?
Laid off because of lack of work, not because of disaffirmation.
Lack of work, so a highway department guy, something happens, and, um, he has to be laid off for six months, and then, um, you guys start paving roads, and he can come back. Does he get to keep his years of service, or does he start over?
Keep his years of service.
That's what I think.
Yeah, keep your.
Okay, um, election, if an employee loses their job due to the election results, like a first deputy, they're assigned by that office holder, if they lose their job, but then something comes available later on, three months later, do they get to keep their years of service?
Keep it.
If position opens and she is hired three months later in the treasurer's office.
Yeah, so she's hired somewhere else, so, you know, an example, just to use the clerk's office, so Amy does it when her first deputy is Amanda, Amanda automatically loses her position, does Amanda get a, you know, come back three months later because something opens, so she get to keep her longevity? She wasn't, it wasn't her choice to leave the position.
I'd say so.
Okay.
Other problem with?
Okay, uh, moving around offices, I don't see an issue with that, but I had somebody question it, so if you start in the treasurer's office, go to the court, and then go to the auditor's office, but you have no break-in service, I see no issue with that one.
Nope.
Okay. Um, perf, this is something that, uh, perf is required, if you leave and retire, and then you get elected to like a council position, perf requires you to be gone for thirty days, terminate for thirty days, so you can start collecting your perf, and then you can be rehired, we've had that at a couple other counties that I've called, and that they do allow that longevity to continue for them.
Other problems?
The council doesn't contribute to the perf, so why would it be a problem?
Well, that's down at the bottom, so, our council commissioners, are you definitely leaving them out of longevity pay?
I would say, that's my opinion, I don't know what your guy, that's my personal opinion, if you had to ask the council, what their commissioner, that's my personal opinion.
I agree, I agree with the, leaving the commissioners out.
Okay. All right, um, so then we'll go on to number five, a person quits, they put in their two weeks' notice, they leave, they think the grass is greener on the other side, and go work at the bank for twelve months, nine months, whatever, and then they decide they wanna come back, are they allowed to keep longevity or have to start over?
They quit.
They actually quit?
They quit.
Okay, so they start over.
Funny, you guys, like, right after.
If they quit.
They quit, they quit.
And then a person is terminated, so if a person is terminated at the highway department, but they go apply at the jail, and Mike hires them as a jailer, do they get to keep their longevity?
If they're fired?
They were terminated from the highway department for some reason, but then Mike needs jailers, and he hires that person as a jailer, because whatever they were terminated for, he doesn't see an issue.
If they were fired within thirty, within less than thirty days, that'd be?
Within thirty days?
Is that agreeable, I mean, that's?
Given what they was fired for.
Yeah, yeah.
That's true.
No, I, I, that's too broad, if that was more.
So that one needs to be, uh?
Edited.
Edited, and we'll check on that.
My personal opinion.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Um, part-time service, we don't count as longevity, yes or no?
No.
Yeah.
And then elected officials, are elected officials gonna get longevity pay while in And then elected officials, are elected officials going to get longevity pay while in office? And if no, do their years in service when they were in office count? So do you want elected officials to get longevity, yes or no?
What's other counties do?
The majority of the other counties do allow it. And then we'll skip down to number ten. Um, how many times can they leave and come back? How many times are you going to allow this to happen? So if they leave and they come back, and then let's say they decide to quit again.
I think we're getting into a lot of decisions that-
That's specific to the-
Number ten, I could be in the chair over here.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll get the officer, yeah.
And then, is there any acceptable amount to be gone? Are you going to allow them to come back in five years? Or is that going to be an office holder decision also?
An office holder, again, it's depend on the case, depending on what the situation was.
Okay, and the only other thing I'm holding on, on the handbook, is the holiday pay. Uh, Mike has some issue in the sheriff's department with some of the wording on designated holidays by commissioners and actual holidays observed. So we'll need to go over that a little bit more in depth, and then I'll be able to put that in the handbook. Is there any questions?
Any office holders have any questions?
Yeah, I got one question.
Sure.
Um, so you said earlier on the highway department, if someone works, let's say, six months, then get laid off due to work, and you said the year will- Excuse me, continue, how is that any different than part-time going full-time? Like if you work, I mean, what that-
Part-time.
Part-time has no benefits whatsoever. We don't allow them to, um, do any kind of personal time, vacation, comp time. They don't get anything, and they, their hours can fluctuate too much, so you can have somebody in the recorder's office that may work eight hours, but then the next week they may work fifteen hours. So it's just really flex, right? I don't think they should be allowed to have longevity due to the amount of hours they're working.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I would think that it would be easier to have one set of rules across the board, no matter what your position is, what the circumstances are. There should be one set of, if you're gone for more than this amount of time, then the longevity doesn't continue, is my opinion. You know, you get into all of this back and forth, that's a lot of-
And there is a section in the handbook saying states. If you're gone more than thirty days, you start over on everything. So if you're gone more than thirty days, and you're a seasoned employee, you've been here for ten years, and you're gone more than thirty days, you don't get your hundred and twenty days worth of, or hundred and twenty hours worth of vacation. You have to start over.
I understand what you're talking about.
We can go that way, or we can go through these different scenarios. We can say thirty days, cut off, this is it. And that would be cut and dry for everything. Because the purpose of longevity pay is for somebody who is committed to their position with no breaks in service.
How many people is going to affect we got now? I know what two is going to affect. If we just go thirty days.
I think you could change the amount of days that you want to go with, but I think there should be, you know, the same set of rules for-
I understand, okay.
Pretty much, you know, like getting into a-
We can change it to sixty days, or that gives them two months. Or you can go by the scenarios.
I think to say one thing fits all is not right. I think you ought to look at the individual case. Again, office holders, I mean, office holders have a certain amount of, I mean, if they want to give up all their rights, and we set this off for everybody, I understand that, but. Right now, you said it's at thirty days. I think maybe I'll be changed to sixty days.
Sixty days for longevity?
Sixty days, yeah. Sixty days.
So sixty days, and then if a scenario comes up, that'll be an office holder's decision, you know, depending on-
I don't think I'll take the, I mean, if all office holders want to give up all your rights, and, you know, I, I don't think that's the proper way to do it. Every office holder has got, should have their own, uh, decision-making on some of that, and I think it's important that we let them have some say-so in that. Unless you want to set rules to hold-
If you do away with the uniformity, uh, then, then other office holders have pressure put on them, that, well, Joe Schmo got enough here, folks, obviously, you're not going to be able to make that.
And I do hear that.
If you all want uniformity, we can do that, too. We can do it. The off, office holders are here, you, you got right to say your part, if you want it that way or you don't want it that way. Flora.
I'd like to see it black and white and not gray.
Okay, that's fine with me. I, your input's important to me, too, I mean.
Sixty days?
I don't care what the timeline is, but I think that everyone should be, have the same amount.
Sixty days?
Sixty days?
Okay.
All right.
And then?
That's all I have?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to take the ER scene thing, we just got paperwork relocated over, we'll get back to that first month, next month. Treasurer's office credit card, Flora.
Um, I do have that. I haven't printed it yet.
Courthouse security desk.
I finally found a car for the, uh, just, I'm waiting to get a price for it, but four thousand, four thousand four. We'll want to build one that looks pretty much like this up here, but is in a U shape downstairs. And we'll have casters up there, it has to be, and we'll be able to look around, and hopefully by next meeting, we'll have a price for it.
That will set up a little bit right, elevated.
Yeah, yeah.
Courthouse ground, you got a picture of it or something to design?
No, we're, we kind of hand designed it while, while we were here Friday. The idea is to have a U-shaped desk with a small countertop, just like that, except it'll set higher than what this one does. It'll set about mid-chest high. Anyway, it'll fit between those two columns with the desk it is currently, but it'll also be some type of a safety shield. It'll have it which direction you walk in, you're going to see that desk.
Mike, does this coincide with the new security checkpoint coming through with the new, um, what do you want to call it?
Scanner?
Scanner's coming.
No, because that's actually going to be out from what I understand, out of the west side entrance.
What's what I didn't mean, I mean at the desk, is the desk going to be somewhere close to that, or the desk going to be?
No, it would be too big to go out early at any door. It would be where the desk is now, except it's supposed to stick out further, a little on the floor, and be a little bit wider, whereas the counter space would then be bigger. But also gives us the ability for our video monitors, computer, and all that stuff there, where they can watch those at some time instead of just under half the building, which is like, I mean, it works, but it seems real, real powerful for it, and you get to see a very, better view of two hundred.
Okay.
On the courthouse grounds, I never have heard anything from that one gentleman. I understand, if we have to move some rubber, you can do that.
Yeah, if you guys want to do something here on the east side, I think, and, and the problem, I talked to some, that there's a foliage issue there. Uh, we can come and take it out for nothing. I can even do it myself, or get somebody from the county garage to come and take it out. I don't see spending money on that. My, my question to, on that, is it'd be okay to go and plant some more roses down through there and make up lower stuff? I mean, where's Terry at?
He's not in here.
I got no problem planting more roses, just, personally, that shrub, it can be trimmed back, whatever, it's got to be removed, you know, we can save money doing it ourselves.
So it'd be okay to get with Terry and whatever he says? Okay, take that stuff out, and I'll take it out.
Yeah, let's get it done, let's not be passionate about getting it done. Go ahead.
I just, my only concern is maintenance of it. Yeah, I know Terry's already got his hands full, but what are you doing now? Um, so my suggestion is, if roses are easy to maintain, I don't know, I've never grown roses, but my suggestion would be go with something really easy that doesn't really require any maintenance, because I don't think that our maintenance crew has the time to put into that. And I know most of the office holders don't do that, so.
Good.
Unless there's a civic group or something that's willing to come do that, you know, on a, every couple of week basis or something like that, but I don't know.
What's that one group coming?
Have, have Terry come talk to me, I'll give him some recommendations.
Okay. Yeah, could I take care of the roses right now? That's, that's some of our roses right here.
You don't want roses.
We'll discuss that.
You don't want roses.
We'll discuss that. End of conversation.
Okay, Wendy, you have a health department, we got an appointment to make. You got a recommendation?
Doctor Somerville, um, has resigned from his position. Um, he is no longer a resident in our county, so.
When did this happen?
Uh, July twentieth.
Okay, he moved in.
So we have to replace him. There are, there is criteria that they have to meet. Um, we sent out letters, and so we received three names for the recommendations. Mr. Chapman, Superman Superintendent, Brittany Gooding, she works at, she's a dentist at Crown Hill Dentistry, and then Dr. Thomas Cloyde from Crown Hill Dentistry. These are the three that we've got back, like I said, and then I sent, there's a roster that you guys, um, that's attached to that. So, um, political affiliation is the reason why there's only one that can serve on the board at this point. So, that, there, Dr. Cloyde is the only one that can serve with that. You can't have more, uh, in the party than four.
When did you check this, political affiliation? Who'd you get that from?
That's the state form right there. And, and the law is also on here.
You got this from the state?
Yes, that's directly from the state. We have a good board. Our board is very active, and they are very up on what's going on. Um, they do communicate as we communicate with them. So we have Dr. Brock, Dr. Crane, um, Terry Hill, who's an RN, past hospital administrator, Kay Smith, she's an RN, and then Judy Howard.
So you're saying since you got four Republicans, you had two Democrats on it, correct? What does this? So you're saying to balance the board, you have to have a Democrat appoint, because there's so many Republicans on there, is that what you're saying?
Yep, that's actually the state law, and the IC code is right on there.
And this is a current from the state?
Yep, yep. That's our current roster as of right now.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we appoint-
No choice.
Thomas Cloyde.
Second.
Third, or fourth?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure, I need a coffee. Okay, drainage ordinance, driveway permits.
So as far as the drainage, um, ordinance goes, as far as driveway permits, I need to clarify a few things. So the, well, the highway will provide the homeowners, at the highway's cost, the homeowners will have to buy it. A twelve-inch culvert measuring twenty feet long, is that correct?
Minimum?
I, I think that-
Okay, quick. They buy it through us, yeah?
Right.
They can buy it through us, or they can buy it wherever, but it's going to be our specification.
Right, so it, it has to be twelve inches and twenty feet.
And we will, if we buy it, we will install it.
Okay.
But that base of that diameter could be changed, you can-
Yeah, for the drainage.
Sure, absolutely, but right now we have nothing, so this is a minimum. So we'll put that, okay, good, minimum. And then, um, is this for only new homes, or if somebody's adding a drive to, you know, a barn, or any egress?
I'd say any egress.
Any egress, and, coming off of a county road.
Right.
Okay.
But they got to cross our ditch.
Right, and, and this is on the agenda for the September seventeenth meeting, so I'll have a report for you guys, um, you know, what they approve.
Uh, probably be the next meeting after that.
The twenty-ninth, September twenty-ninth is when I'll, we'll have an answer for you. So not this next meeting, but the following one. All right?
Okay, you got to hang on to county drainage standards?
That was the document that Eric Smith provided to us, which was a proposed, like a comprehensive drainage, uh, plan for the entire county.
All right. Uh, public law fifty-three, are your plan commission appointments?
Okay, um, we're working with the area plan last meeting. They, um, they want to see if we can keep, they were looking to see if we could keep Phil Cox on as grandfathered in for, to be a voting member. Our attorney looked into it, and we can only keep him on as a voting member, um, until October of twenty-twenty-one. So at the next meeting, again, it'll be September seventeenth, they're going to have to decide if they want to just ask you guys to keep him until October of twenty-twenty-one as a voting member, or, um, appoint someone else as a voting member, and he would stay on as, as an advisory capacity only. Because the public, was it public law fifty-three won't allow him to stay on?
He doesn't live here, right?
Do what?
He doesn't live in this county, correct?
Correct, he lives in Park County. So I'll have an answer for you that on the twenty-ninth as well.
All right. Okay, alternative energy ordinance?
Um, we're currently working on solar ordinance. That's what the area plan decided to go with first, was solar. And, um, we had a special meeting August the twentieth, had a great turnout. We had sixteen Bermania County citizens and two Apex representatives here. A lot of good information put together. Ron Severt, our attorney, is working on the suggestions that area plan had for the solar ordinance. They're looking at Lake County and Randolph County as kind of examples to follow. Um, I do want to make a note, and Eric already knows this, but our meeting for September, normally would be the tenth. We backed it up a week, or moved it forward a week to the seventeenth, because there's a webinar on September the ninth, put on by IU called Indiana's New Solar, Model Solar Ordinance. So we wanted to see if they had any suggestions of something we hadn't seen. And with the webinar, it'll be recorded, so the members want the opportunity to view it, process it, so we're going to meet on the seventeenth. And we're just moving forward with the solar ordinance at this point.
I'm going to make a recommendation I think needs to be done, because things going in this county, everyone has a right to know. Everyone needs to be informed. And I'll make a recommendation for any ordinance that's done, like that's passed. Do you have an open meeting?
Oh, it, it's required.
Okay.
Once we, once we come up with something that the commission all agrees on, and they, we have to have a public hearing, has to be noted, advertised, the entire ordinance has to be written in the paper, has to be advertised ten days prior to a public hearing. We'll hold a public hearing, so anyone can come voice their concerns or inputs. And then we vote on it and pass it on to the commissioners, and ultimately commissioners have the final say-so.
Johnson Solutions, Mr. Britton.
Those are formal meetings. Is there a reason why there's not informal work sessions that at least a couple of, that the public can attend, as opposed to a meeting that is subject to minutes and more or less informational meetings that are put on?
Concerning?
Wind, solar, other alternatives. You're going right into ordinance, which is already structured, as opposed to being able to allow a free flow of ideas or whatever.
Our ordinance was not structured the other night. Our ordinance was not structured the other night.
We didn't have any things.
They came with their suggestions, uh, what they would like to see, what they, you know, working with them. Uh, it was very open to you. Uh, the citizens even had their, you know, comments. Uh, so they're not just structured off the two, uh, Randolph and Lake County ideal, it's, it's open. We took a little bit here and a little bit there, and they're, they're inputs.
But those meetings are supposedly toward the plan, area planning and zoning thing?
It was, it was a special meeting. It was open to the public.
What I'm talking about is more of a town hall, like we, as opposed to a, these are advertised meetings, aren't they?
Yeah, they're advertised.
And they're supposed to be structured for area planning and zoning, correct?
That's what, that's what the plan is.
And any subject can come up at that point. Whether it's wind, solar, driveway permits, whatever might be, or green. What I'm getting at is that there should be meetings pointed toward wind, meetings toward solar.
It was a special meeting the other night for solar energy.
That's my comment.
Johnson Solutions?
Morning, everybody. So Rick Anderson with Johnson Mellow. I was here, um, I was here a month or so ago, so my, my presentation might be very, uh, very short today. I know you were talking about doing some stuff with the jails, so the primary, uh, uh, if you look at all the information that you were given, um, there's a few things to be done here in the courthouse. So there's legislation, state of Indiana allows you guys to go out and do these guaranteed energy projects, where you're looking at HVAC, lighting, plumbing, and solar. I was, I was going to talk to you about solar afterwards. We've done approximately thirty to forty percent of the solar that's been installed in the state of Indiana since its inception. Indianapolis Airport is a real good example. Uh, that was one of our first jobs about seven, eight years ago. But primarily, we were looking at your jail, and it looks like, uh, it sounds like there was some, when we were walking around, hey, we're probably going to build a new one potentially. This gave, this gave you some ideas on if you were going to keep it. I call on eighty-eight counties in Indiana, and it's kind of all over the place. Uh, your, your neighbors up here in Park County, about same vintage jail as you, they're fixing theirs up, but Fountain County, uh, up here to the north, you know, they built a brand-new jail. And we're talking about some solar to, uh, to help them at their jail. That's your big energy user. And, uh, what we're talking about doing potentially is, is putting in a solar field at the jail up here to offset a hundred percent of your electric, which is again, a pretty substantial, um, amount of money. So this is an idea that, hey, if you want to spend, you know, a couple million bucks to renovate the jail versus spending, it sounds like you've got some ideas, ten, twelve, fourteen million dollars to build a brand-new one, so. So this is, again, uh, there was no cost to the county to do this study. We did the utility analysis, something else, and the building walkthrough. If you guys decide to build a new jail, um, you know, we can come back and talk to you, uh, at that point about, um, you know, potentially providing electrics for, uh, to offset your electric.
The gas-fired radiant heater in Hobby Garage, that be an overhead heater?
Yeah. You probably, I don't know if you've seen those or not, but the box heater is basically just heat to a, just straight out. These radiant heaters, uh, go above and basically radiate down. It's a much more efficient and, uh, uh, much more efficient and warm.
Did you look at all three garages?
We did.
Can you get a price and what that costs?
Well, what I can do is if we, if we take out the jail on this thing and basically just look at this building and those highway garages, I can give you an updated number.
Do that?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, I'll come, I'll come back. I'll put some numbers together and come back to you. Okay, thank you.
So she has business solutions. Turning in scanning fleet, you ready to go in?
We talked at the last meeting. I don't think it needs to be up on.
Okay, all right. All right, we're going to go down back to new business again. Bridge over Spring Creek, well, fourteen fifty north. I've been working on this for a couple of years. We can put this bridge in and buy it out of our regular bridge warranty and go on the, back to eighty-twenty, is that correct, Terry?
You what?
We can do, buy the bridge out of our bridge package and not have to do the, the eighty-twenty?
Yeah, we already got a contract with the E-three bridge. And, uh, if you buy the bridge and don't go through the eighty, uh, eighty-twenty deal. You probably save money, uh, by putting this kind of bridge in.
It's on County Road fourteen fifty, and that's going back to the river, for north of Perry'sville. It's a seventy-foot, two-length bridge, twenty-six wide, and the, the questions I had with it, there's just thirty-some houses back there. So it's probably sixty-plus people, plus, there's farm ground back there, in and out. And I've had two different people look at it and say they can do it half at a time for people to get in and out. And I have talked to the Perry'sville Fire Chief, and then if we do this, I need to go back and talk to emergency personnel, make sure they still can't get in, where they can do half at a time, if you can still get out, yeah, I mean. We don't shut them off altogether. But the price of the bridge, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars, that's just a bridge. That's not the labor that we'd have to advertise for the labor to put it in.
It's just for the material for the bridge?
That's just the material for the bridge, huh?
It's seventy feet by twenty feet wide?
It's seventy-two foot long and twenty-six feet wide between the rails.
Is that one of those metal?
No, this would be a concrete one. It wouldn't be a metal one. This is the, this is the price on a concrete one.
How many prices did you get? How many quotes did you get?
Uh, this is the first quote I've got so far. I'm just bringing it to your attention.
But, uh, we don't have to, on this deal here, uh, we got a contract with the three bridge. Where you don't, you can just buy it out of the contract and don't have to advertise. For the purchase of the bridge.
We'd have to advertise the, the main, so the, the labor.
Installation, yes.
Installation, yes. I'd like to see it go in, but it's just, you know, we get the money to.
When you looking at doing it?
Huh?
When you looking at what to do?
Well, it's going to have to work around, uh, I want to work around the, uh, the farmer's schedule. I mean, it goes just getting harvest time now. I want to be, like, for it to be after their crops are out and everything back in there.
So you want it this year?
Would be nice, if we could. I mean, if not, it just, the price is good for, right now, like, thirty to eighty, plus sixty days.
You said there's eighty-twenty funding on that?
No, no, no eighty-twenty.
No eighty-twenty. This is all out of the clean bridge.
Is there any way you could try to get funding on that for the?
It costs us more money on eighty-twenty.
It'll cost you more than the twenty percent you're paying?
Yeah. Fuck or tell. Do we got the funds in that?
Um, you have to get with Melissa. She does the bridge budget. We have to go print, see what she's got.
Bring it back next meeting.
Cause next year, we got a sizable amount coming out from Bridge One Twenty-Two.
Yeah.
We need to set.
You're on eighty-twenty, though.
Yeah, eighty-twenty.
Yeah, and that's down there, it'll be all right. So to check them, I'll check with Melissa then. I'll get, you going to check with her?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, all right, you'll let me know. Okay, social media archiving. Mike, you got it?
Archive, every, uh, by Indiana Open Record Code, we're required to archive and have the metal of our, uh, social media accounts. So, so I post something and it's removed, looks for derogatory reasons, or the person who posted it removes it. That all still has to be, we have to be able to capture that and present it and request it. We're going to have to do something, you know, we're a little behind the goal on this, but I think there's other municipalities that are going to catch me on it, too. Uh, we're doing a, a trial with two of the, the two biggest companies with it right now, so if you want to, if you want to like table this for, you know, the next meeting or possibly later on. I want to add some of the other social accounts with it, so we can see how much space we're actually going to be using to get a better price for the field. But we have to do it one way or another.
Amy, you want to show? Okay.
Any office holder that's, that's, that's out, one of our, one of our, we all have to be archived and available for this couple of weeks.
Okay. Do we have our, see, the next meeting's the eighteenth in the area, are we right, John?
The fifteenth, I have to get in court in Vigo County.
Well, being the twenty-ninth, right?
Yeah, the fifteenth, you're going to have minimal business. So just do your claims, your payroll, um, and we'll go right in by the green for the council. So any, any of this table business will go along the twenty-ninth.
The twenty-ninth, I'd like to have a nine-one-one on our, see where he's at with our, uh, nine-one, the, I'm getting calls for nine-one-one numbers. And I've talked to him, he's, he's trying to get a call up, see by the twenty-ninth, if he can, if it's up big where he's at.
The house numbers?
Yes, is that correct? Correct, Penny? Being house number's correct, for nine-one-one.
Oh, the, the, the numbers.
Yeah.
Place on the map.
He told me he's running behind, maybe he's trying to get caught up. I talked to him.
He's working on it.
Yeah, he's working on it, see where he's updating. If you have it up big by the twenty-ninth. And if you can't, typically they can. You hanging on still for this morning? Mr. Johnson?
Okay, um, I was asked last week to give some, uh, information about the ambulance. And right now, the ambulance, as of August twenty-sixth, has three hundred and thirty-six transports down from last year due to the COVID-nineteen outbreak. Which has decreased the billable amount of, of revenue of six hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-six cents. And that's going off the average of per run collection for last year. The collectible amount with that would be right under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And as a contract that I, uh, gave you a copy of that we signed in September nineteenth of twenty seventeen, under Article Twelve, which I've talked to, uh, your attorney about, and, uh, Commissioner Wilson. That if there's a problem with refunding, that we can talk, we can, at our request, we can come to the county board, or county commissioners, and discuss this. And so I'm just making you aware of this, that we would like to discuss, the, uh, because the money that we're typically budgeted on was on the volume of the, the run volume that we were told that was going to be here. And we count on that money to make the, the revenue from that to, for part of the operating expenses. However, we have no way to go through the CARES Act. To be able to recoup any of the additional funding. I think the county is eligible to do, because we're a private corporation, we're not allowed to do that. So I'm just making you aware of that, uh, and giving you a letter with an, ask, answer any questions you all may have.
Let me set that up sometime in your convenience.
I would suggest put it on the agenda for the next meeting where you're going to do business and start the discussion from that.
Right, I'm just, I have to make you aware, as per the contract sign here, making you aware of, of it.
Thank you, Eric.
You have any questions for me?
No, all right.
Okay.
I believe in, in Paradise Act under category one, that expensive money be covered up on, so the county can actually definitely.
Can you find out an answer for it? Thank you, Mark. Les Centerman, you got a question?
I'd just like to make you aware that, uh, we are making great progress out at the new park. If you drive by there, you'll see that the, uh, new timber-framed picnic shelter is erected. Uh, we've got trusses on, the purlins are on. Uh, we have a commitment from, uh, Tim Potrell, uh, to put the roof on first and trail for it, no charge to us. Wickens Construction was, uh, very helpful in putting up the timber frame. He put his crew on that project for two and a half days, had no charge to, to us or the county. Uh, so we're just really thrilled with this project. We'd like you to drive down there and have a look at it. I think it will have a roof on it here within the next couple of weeks.
It looks real nice. And the first time John and I went down there, probably about fifteen years ago, it'd crawl through the fence, so it looks nice and walkable right now.
Well, I'd point out, too, that we did plant an additional six trees down here this spring. Uh, we've got a total of thirty additional native Indiana species that are on that project. Uh, some of those trees have come through their second growing season. They're starting to look like some. And out of all the trees that we planted, uh, we've lost one tree. Uh, there are also, already were on that site at least nine, maybe ten, uh, native species. So we have a, we have a museum of Indiana native trees down there, probably at least forty, forty-two species.
Can you adopt a tree for a fee, in memory of somebody?
Yes, and we can. We are still accepting donations. A hundred dollars a tree will get you a sign, uh, either, either in honor of somebody, in memory of somebody, or donated by somebody, or, or, you know, anything that you, that people want to donate, the, a hundred dollars a tree, uh, will go toward this project, so.
Tom, you going to speak?
Just to add, just the trail, I mean, we've got, we're, we're back, we're ready to put gravel on the first phase one, and, and just, uh, get that done. And then, what I may call phase two or whatever, but it is clear, I mean, you can walk a mile in that, one way, and that, so, you know, there's someplace to go walk it.
You start, basically, you're kind of open for business a little bit? You're kind of open for business a little bit? Not official?
I would say cautiously. Is there no signage up yet? That is one of the things, you know, I, I mean, I went up, uh, like, yesterday, we went to Delphi and checked out the trails there, and all the signage up there, and the certain language that back there, tourism, and all these things. The limit liability in the park, though, is hoping to be signage for all their parks, so we understand, so we want to be consistent with their signage. So, that's, that's a critical part of it, is to make sure that we cover ourselves, uh, and, 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 you know, do your own risk, and then safety, uh, safety, uh, and, you know, we're going to be on the trail, so.
Well, and your, your park board, your main country park board has been, has been off and on with it, and, well, they, uh, they erected a flagpole out there, didn't know how good to see that thing come up. And, uh, there's been a great deal of maintenance, and, uh, you know, like, I'm, 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 signing and releasing that, so it's mapping all over the park.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your hard work. Any questions for the board this morning? Want to figure?
Michael? Are you going to, you going to work now? Are you going to work now? Are you all?